Good morning. It's eight o'clock and I'm calling a meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here that wish to be heard on an item that's not on the agenda? Darren, do we have anybody online?
We did not.
Okay. Next is approval of bills and vouchers.
I would move to approve the bills and vouchers.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes. Next up, we have a request for approval of a joint cooperative agreement between the city of Morehead and Clay County. Sheriff Emptings here with us. Sheriff, morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for having us here this morning. Here to request approval to enter into a JPA with the city of Morehead to provide policing services. Staffing right now, not only for the city of Morehead but just law enforcement as general, is very difficult to hire, very difficult to retain, and they're experiencing a staffing shortage over there. The JPA is very similar to one we did back in 2017 where we deployed county resources into the city of Morehead to assist with calls for service, and we were reimbursed back for our services at that time. This JPA has been reviewed by Assistant County Attorney Lysar and MCIT, and both approved this JPA.
Just make an observation on this. I was chief when we did this last time. It's an unfortunate situation in law enforcement right now, and I think it's an unnecessary one, that we have the pressure to get staffing out on the streets that we do. It is still a great career.
It is.
It's one I have no regrets after forty years of serving in the field. It's difficult at times. Sometimes it's incredibly difficult, but overall, it's a job where you can do great things for people. It's interesting and it's exciting, and I hope that anybody out there who's looking for a career, any young people that are trying to decide where they want to go, would work towards getting the qualifications that our sheriff's department or Morehead Police can explain to you what the requirements are and gets you pointed in the right direction. And this is a great community to be a police officer. It's a great, great part of the state. It's a great state to work in. There's a lot of support, and it's unfortunate, but I appreciate the fact that every -- I'm a Clay County Commissioner. Every one of my immediate constituents, I serve everybody in the county, but everybody who votes for me or doesn't vote for me chooses not to, in District Five as a Morehead citizen. And it's good to know that the Clay County Sheriff's Department acknowledges the fact that they need our response and our support too. And I appreciate that. Sheriff and I appreciate that this contract will allow us to do so. Anybody got anything? Yes.
I question probably, Darren can answer, workers' compensation. I mean, I realize it says that if you're hurt there while working for Morehead, we are responsible for the workers' compensation, and I was wondering if that's a good policy? They cover something like that if someone goes to work somewhere else and then gets hurt and we have to cover it then?
Yeah. It would just be like if they were working for us, the workers' comp. I know that, I believe Sheriff called the workers' comp. I know that it was something that I raised as well, but when we talked to the workers' comp, they said that it would still, we would still have to cover our own employees, so...
Even though they're working for someone else?
Yes.
They're still working for the county. They're still a county resource, working for Clay County. It's just we're being reimbursed back for our services that we're providing. They're not technically working for the city of Morehead. They're still working for Clay County.
Okay. We're still providing coverage and...
Yeah, it's looking a little bit different there then. Okay. Thank you.
Paul. Yeah, me too. I appreciate the collaboration, of course, you know, for our great, our whole community. When you, you said you had done this once before.
Correct, 2017.
Were there end dates to them? I mean, what brings us on? I understand demand, obviously, and supply shortage of employees, but how does it end and how does it begin?
Well, it begins essentially once we get all of the, all of the technical stuff in place through dispatch, because the dispatch has to do a couple of things to get calls for service, to get our badge numbers assigned to Morehead Calls for Service, so it's a Morehead stat, so to speak. And then when it ends essentially is when their staffing levels become to the point where they're able to sustain on their own without our assistance.
Okay, so it's more on their end to, okay. It's not a specific number, I wouldn't think. It's about being able to service their calls. Okay.
And they're, they're working towards hiring, just like everybody else, but it is difficult to hire law enforcement.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you again.
Any additional? We have a motion and a second.
I'll move.
No, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Chief Deputy. Next on the agenda is request approval for Resolution 2024-07 for small city street allotment.
Yes, good morning. So I'm bringing forward the resolution that's passed annually. So this is funding to the non-state aid cities for work done on city streets and for the city of Morehead for work done on county roads within the city of Morehead. This is something I bring every year around this time.
Any questions for Justin?
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, same sign? That was easy.
Yeah. The second item I have is requesting approval to issue requests for proposals for bridge design services. So I'm requesting approval to issue an RFP for bridge design. So this is for a Glendon Township bridge on 12th Avenue South, just east of 336, east of Stratus Pit there. So I've met with the township probably three or four times just regarding the bridge and what their wish is moving forward, and they definitely want a bridge there. So this is kind of the next step in getting a consultant on board to design the bridge for us. So as far as an impact to our budget, it's strictly Township Bridge funds and then Glendon Township funds. They're responsible for the first 10,000 in engineering and the first 10,000 in construction. So they're capped at 20, and then the rest comes out of the Town Bridge Fund.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question. Yeah, just curious, when these new designs of bridges come in now, is there a certain weight limit they work with? I mean, is it more, especially with mining service, you know, gravel nearby? I mean, how does that work?
Sure. So they're all rated for legal weights.
Okay.
And then I can't remember the loading classification that a new bridge is designed to, but a lot of, you can put a, I mean, anything that's legal can drive on it.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if they souped up a little bit or not.
No, not really. And it's all based on stated standards too, so...
Okay, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the RFPs for the bridge design.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have James O'Donnell, Director of our Juvenile Detention Facility, request approval for rehire of an open juvenile detention worker position in the secure unit.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Members, Commissioners. I'm here today to request permission to refill a open juvenile worker position in the secure unit. This position's in our 2024 budget, and it's critical for safety and security.
Do we feel this person will stay with us this time, or...
I have no idea. The person that's leaving us is leaving the human service field altogether, so hopefully.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a request for approval for, Darren, is this still on the agenda? Item six. Okay. It is, okay. We have a request for approval to apply for safe drinking water for private well use grant. And we have Matthew Jacobson, Kent Severson, with respect, well, I don't...
Kevin. Kent has changed a little bit, yep. He's a little, he's a little different looking today. Yeah.
He has another hair.
Yeah.
Proceed, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So originally, I was going to bring before you a request for Clay County to apply for a state grant, the safe drinking water, safe drinking water for private well users grant. Since I submitted the, this agenda item, and between now and then, we've learned that actually Norman County has submitted, or is going to submit a grant on behalf of essentially the West Central Regional or Rural Water District, and they're including us on the grant. So I spoke with Stephen Slick of A2S, Kevin and Kent Severson, and we were kind of looking over their application that they put together. We had a few, few comments that we submitted to them as well. Figured it would be better for us to kind of, I guess, leverage our existing capacities and really maximize our orginal efficiencies here, because this is a very competitive grant. There are only six awards going out through the entire state, and so we thought it'd be better if we put, it would be a much stronger application if we're showing more partnerships and things like that, and submitting this as more of a regional type of approach. And really, what, what this grant would do for us as a county is it would basically provide funding to facilitate private well testing for things like arsenic, fecal chloroform, manganese, and other types of contaminants that are pretty common in wells. I did include some information just because I know arsenic has come up a few times now at board. Looking at some Department of Health data between 2008 and 2021, there's been 639 wells tested in Clay County. Of those, 72% had arsenic in them at the level of two micrograms per liter, which is not ideal. And 39% of those were above 10 micrograms per liter, which is not, not ideal at all, with the median value with those wells tested being 6.6. So, and that seems to be kind of a trend, especially in the northwestern part of the state with our heavy clay soils and things like that. So having this funding would be really beneficial, just to kind of get a better, a broader picture of, of what's going on on the landscape with regards to wells, especially older wells that maybe haven't been tested. So as part of this grant, there's kind of a strategy for reaching out to folks, targeting folks who may not have ever had their wells tested before, may not, and then also prioritizing wells that are above the safe levels for maybe doing some treatment options or financing some treatment options for them. And Kevin is here because I know Kevin's office has a lot of connections with, with rural landowners, and so this is a good way, you know, Kevin, don't want to speak for you, but your office would be a good, it's a, you know, folks stop in, it's a good way to kind of get the word out about, about this program if we were, if our, we were to get this, this grant, so. And then also have testing kits available for folks to pick up too. Currently, we do have, through environmental health, well testing kits available. Folks can come pick them up and then bring them back, and then the RMB Labs out of Detroit Lakes comes and they'll make a run like two to three times a week, and they'll come pick them up and, and do the testing, so. But testing can get a little spendy. If you're testing for all of the five main contaminants, it's, I think it runs like 120 bucks or something like that, so it should help ease that burden for folks.
What do we do about it? I mean, you say so many percent of the wells have arsenic in them. What have we done about it? I mean, have we done anything? Are they keep using those wells? Or is it okay to use them?
I will admit that wells are not my expertise, so I don't know what the latest and greatest treatment options are available. I would assume that folks, there are some treatment options available for treating that arsenic, filtration and things like that to remove that from drinking water. Some folks don't even use their wells for drinking water, because it might be safe to, you know, bathe in or anything like that, or use it for washing clothes, things like that. They might have another water source that they use for drinking and cooking too.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul.
Yeah, so the treatment is reverse osmosis. And so anyway, these treatment things are put into the homes. They're getting more expensive all the time, but they just, it depends on the situation, but 1,500 to 3,000 dollars is what I normally see. I hear numbers as high as 5,000, but I haven't seen that yet. So I have a question maybe for Kevin a little bit. Number one, fully support the idea of a broader grant? I think that kind of fits in well with the new water district concept too, right? You know, I mean, it's putting that together. I think also, you know, my involvement as a Realtor has always been point of sale. So the only people that are really in the know on this that they have an issue is when they sell their property, and then it's a huge surprise, you know, it's 3,000 bucks, whatever the case. I've seen levels south of town up to 50. So I mean, the numbers can get really, really high, and you've, you've had people that have been drinking that water for 50 years, right? And so I think it is very, very important the greater public knows that, because not everybody's selling their house or, you know, or buying. So Kevin, is there a chance that we could work with Department of Ag on the SRF loan?
Sure, yep.
And where we could be doing that financing through that? Do you think it fits?
I brought one to the board the other day when we had our little annual update.
Okay.
Because right now, that is going through the process of...
Yeah, it's a state revolving fund, and, and then they finance. So these treatments, you know, people could do their testing and then apply through the son of water for SRF grant, and, and it's low interest. Maybe tell them a little more.
It's not a grant, it is a loan.
A loan, I'm sorry.
Low interest loan program, but yes.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and we've had, we've had some experience with the RMB testing. We did a nitrate test, if you remember Paul here a few years ago, through the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. There was a lot of concern with fertilizer in the eastern part of the, it was 13 townships in the eastern part of the county, a little more granular soils. So we had a promotion that we, only for nitrate testing that we did, but we had collection sites in Holly, our office, and another site, I believe up by, maybe by Hitterdall, that we had landowners bringing water samples into there, and it was just for nitrate testing. But then there was a, it was like I say, it was a lot of concern with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture at the time. There was fertilizer issues that they were feeling were potentially contaminating groundwater and high nitrates with blueberry, blue baby syndrome and those type of things, which are all possible. So we, we applied for a grant and got funded to basically pay for landowners to bring their water samples in to a collection sites, and then we took them, or RMB came and collected them too, so. And that was only on 13 townships, so our experience is limited, kind of like what Matt is saying. The Department of Health, this kind of falls into their wheelhouse, and I think maybe Kent being a partner would be a natural fit.
I think we can get creative too, potentially legislative, maybe there's some way we can work with the Clean Water Fund even for Kasha, you know, down the road. That's off topic a little bit, but maybe we can grow this a little bit.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Krabnikoff, this is a clean water on grant.
It is, okay.
Yep, the Department of Health received Clean Water Fund dollars for this.
Right. Appreciate it. Well, I'm sorry.
Kevin, you're, you're part of this grant now?
We are now. We, the grant application came to us unbeknownst to us that we were part of it, which is, which is fine, but I kind of been working with Kent and Matt a little bit just to, because there was some behind the scenes stuff that we were corresponding, thinking maybe we should do it as a county and come, you know, come to us with an application that Norman County has already got us listed on there as be a partner, which is fine. But yeah, we, we're fine with it.
Well, that water district apparently is working, but there's, there's more chance with getting a grant with the number of participants. I think that's, this is an optimal move.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chair, and I'd just thank Kevin for actually bringing this. He's the one who brought it to our attention, so otherwise, we would have just applied on our own.
That'd be awkward.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I guess the only thing I noticed on the implementation timeline, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but I think it should be May 1st, 2027. If you look at the timeline on our sheet, it's July 1st, 2024 to May 1st, 2024.
Yes, that's, my apologies, should be 2027. Yep.
I hope it doesn't make any difference in any thing that we do today, so.
Any additional?
Not all I have, Mr. Chair.
To approve.
No, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Rhonda Porter, Social Service Director, request to approve, approval of Resolution 2024-08 in support of residential psychiatric treatment facility, PRTF in bonding bill. Rhonda, welcome.
Thank you.
We had, had a sad duty last week.
That's right.
I won't, I won't get us off topic too much, but you're going to be missed.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, I'm looking forward to getting a lot of things done over the next few months, so. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We are here this morning to seek approval for a resolution that essentially will highlight Clay County's commitment to the development of a psychiatric residential treatment facility here in Clay County. This resolution would also indicate our desire to submit for a bonding bill that would help with the construction of the facility as we go forward. This resolution, I did share this resolution with about 17 counties in our, in our region here, and many of those counties are going to take this resolution to their boards as well for support in our bonding bill and our, essentially our application as well for some startup funds. I received some real positive feedback that they, all the counties, support our efforts in this direction, and all agree that we need additional PRTF facilities spread better throughout the state. So bringing this resolution before you today for consideration.
Oh, excuse me. Just an observation on this. This has been something, I think there's a little more public awareness in the last few years, but it has been a critical issue since the 70s. There was an attempt to go to community-based treatment, people with mental health issues, and they closed down regional facilities where, that were residential, and turned people loose, and they never followed through on local resources. As we, we've seen with West Central Juvenile Center, there's a, when there's a need, people will come forward, and this county has been remarkable in their ability to address the needs of our, not just our citizens, but to do things that can be more cost-effective for the entire region. And this is a wonderful opportunity to get a badly needed resource for our citizens and for the other Minnesotans, and I would assume probably North Dakotans, if we follow the model, we have West Central, and I'm really excited to see this happening.
Are we requesting a certain amount? I mean, do we, do we know what we need, or we're just saying we'd like some money?
I think that detail has yet to be kind of solidified, both in conversation with our local representative as well as the board. There's been some numbers thrown out there, anticipated what it might cost to build the facility, but I think that's yet to be vetted out. I've heard 15 million, I've heard 25 million, so kind of depends on where we want to see the facility and the size.
I mean, we haven't, have we talked about it? Where's the money going to come from? I mean, say the bond gets 10 million, where's the rest of the money going to come from?
Yeah, that would definitely be a part of the planning, Commissioner Gross. One of the things that just came out last week is a grant opportunity that we've actually been waiting for out of the Department of Human Services. It's a grant opportunity for applicants who would be new to delivering PRTF services. So we had a meeting with Solutions Behavioral Healthcare Professionals yesterday in regards to that application. They do intend to submit an application. It's due the end of March, and the grant funds generally for that program have been around 150,000 to 200,000, but the idea behind that grant would be planning, would be that exact planning. You know, what size of facility are we looking for? What would the operational costs be? What would the funding mechanisms be in addition to bonding money if we were successful in that area? So a lot of that, that kind of detail work would be yet to come. The board resolution is really solidifying the county's commitment and the identification that we need this, we need it in our community, and that in order to make it successful, we would need some level of bonding to help us with our effort.
Well, I totally agree that, I mean, I support this totally, but it's just, I mean, I'm a bit concerned where the money's going to come from, so it's just, I mean, I'm not going to commit anything today to say, yeah, we'll commit 20,000 or 20 million to this or whatever.
Right, absolutely, yep.
Just, and it's maybe since, since we're at that pre-planning spot, but just a couple questions. Would there be emergent resources in, in what we visualize right now? And where do juveniles enter into this? What kind of treatment would be available for juveniles?
At the psychiatric residential treatment facility? Well, it really would be for, for that, it, I think the age range was...
21.
Up to 21. So it would be for those juveniles that unfortunately currently are ending up in juvenile facilities like our detention facility, like West Central, and other detention facilities across the state. So it would certainly serve that population. For this level of care, there's certain eligibility requirements for individuals to be eligible for this level of service, so that would have to go through that process. But it certainly will address some of those youth that we're seeing now in juvenile facilities.
But we're not looking at a stabilization kind of resource? It would be long-term?
Well, we have talked about incorporating some of our other needs in this grand idea of considering crisis beds and whether it would be feasible to consider a wing that might serve adults that we've talked about. So we've got this grand idea. How it will all fit together, we're not absolutely sure at this point, but it's, you know, they're pieces that we need, and if it makes sense that we could look at that bigger picture of both adults and kids, perhaps that might be the right time.
The emergent care, and I've been involved with the project elsewhere that provided 16 beds of emergent care on a SAMSSA grant, and the difference it makes for these individuals, difference, the choice between dumping them in ER, basically, or waiting until something happens where... dumping them in an ER, basically, or, or waiting until something happens where there's a criminal charge involved, we're having a place to take them and get them leveled out and get them away from blue and brown uniforms. It, it made a huge difference, and I'd love to see something like that here, but that's kind of, I think that's down the road.
If we approve this, does that change your retirement date?
So moved.
That's why I have these two ladies here to carry the torch.
Frank, or Paul, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rhonda. You know, obviously, I've been part of the meetings here, and so I do have a couple of questions maybe a little bit for Frank, as we talked about that money initially, and that was on that priority sheet we handed out, we had on there. Steve had just thrown out the number 15 million, okay? And it was just based off the detox and some other buildings, so again, rough, rough, rough. I think the number grows when we hear the possibility of other counties joining in, you know, to have this as a regional area. We know that there's an inflationary factor. All the funding coming through the state through bonding would take maybe phases of time. That could take anywhere from four, six, eight years, right? And so I think there's an inflationary factor, so that's where the 25 comes into play, potentially, right? And then the other thing that I think is so good in, in some of the conversations that we've had, potentially, and I'll just throw it out, it's a model being used throughout the nation. You know, they build pods, so the treatment centers are potentially, as I've heard from Solutions, beds, eight beds in a pod. So as we build, if we're waiting for more state money or other grants, those type of things, we can phase in our finances as we phase those facilities or build them. So it's not like one building being built, you know, it could be, and I've seen some other models, how that lays out. So it almost looks like four different townhomes, if you will.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kravonov. That is exactly what we talked about a little bit yesterday, is that phase-in model, not only for wings and establishing your funding model, but for workforce and program development, and that's critical, I think, too.
And so the resolution brings us toward the facility, but the startup funds that you're talking about, I sure hope we get that grant, because then that's enough money to make all that planning goes into what Commissioner Evergir was talking about, what's that continuum of care, you know, what does it look for all types of treatment, right? You know, throughout the, you know, up to that age 21. One of the things, I think it was emails with you or through Steve, so we talk about, the number is 18 counties, is that what you said, just a few minutes ago?
Yeah, I connected with 17 counties.
17?
Yep.
Okay, so we do the resolution today, if that would pass. Then I had an email that said something about the, the other counties wanting to do something by the 20th? Is that correct? What, where, how does that happen? What's next steps for this?
Yeah, when I send out, when I sent out the resolution, I had asked, you know, for a fairly quick turnaround time, the 20th was related to some of the counties only have board opportunities once a month.
Oh, sure.
And so some of them were not going to their board till the 20th.
Okay.
So my goal was to have those resolutions by at least the end of February, and we would use them twofold, one, for any bonding package that would be needed, but then also in support of the application that Solutions would submit for startup funds.
Okay, and then last, if I may, looking at the resolution, we kept it pretty simple.
Yep.
I see, and we didn't really get into that other county mix at all.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, the reason, I was hoping to kind of put a statement in the resolution that would indicate that, you know, our 17 surrounding counties supported this. Problem was the timing. Many of them wanted to bring them to their board, so I didn't feel comfortable putting that in there absent having, giving them enough time to talk with their boards about it.
Okay.
So we did leave that out intentionally, yep.
Well, very good, and I think it's really, for us, I think it's really timely right now. I mean, it's beginning of session, we certainly have, you know, Rep Keeler wanting to jacket this thing, getting it going toward bonding, just to get it out there. And, and then the other piece, we have our AMC policy next week, so I'll be at the Human Health, Health and Human Services Committees, and hopefully I'll, along with all of us, be raising that, raising that awareness of what we're trying to do at the state level.
Thank you.
Okay, just one more thing, again, way in, and just probably not an answer we can have now. I think staffing is going to be an issue.
Yeah.
And that will be our partners, if Solutions or whoever is partnered on this, I think is part of it, but that is always going to be a consideration of getting adequate staffing with the proper licensure and physicians and the whole, whole bit on that. So that's, as a result, we are planning a work session, hopefully sometime during March. We're going to discuss later in the meeting, and this may be something we want to add to it, to get an update, maybe just look at down the road on what we need. You know, it's a committee, the whole, get all the commissioners up to speed on what we're doing. But this is pretty exciting stuff.
Thank you.
So, if I may?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'd like to move toward a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08 supporting the residential psychiatric treatment facility and bonding bill.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes, thank you, Rhonda, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Animal Department update from Human Resources. That'll be our, 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 the current county administrator and our HR director, Darren Broke.
Perfect, thank you. You don't want to stay?
No.
Rhonda's always a tough act to follow. So, well, thank you for having me today, and what I did is I gave you a handout, and I will pull it up on the screen so everybody can see what we're talking about. And that's good. It might be a little bit small font on the screen, but everybody should have a handout. First, starting off, thank you for having me. If you look at the upper left-hand box, that's our current organization. We have had that same organization for a long time. I've been here for 13 years as of January. Anna Moore, she's our HR coordinator, she's been here for four years. HR generalist is Melissa Young, she's been here for 16 years. And our HR admin is Sarah Helm, and she has been here for one year. And these ladies always make me look good. They, they do some fantastic work, and I'm super proud of everything that they do for the county and the employees of the county. If you look at the upper right-hand corner, you have the union blocks. As you probably recall, we did all the union contracts for, at one time, and so they run from 2023 to 2025. Last year, we did have the case aids decertify, and the, we did pick up the sheriff's clerical staff, and we have a two-year contract from them. So going forward, probably in the fall of 2025, we'll have to make some decisions on whether we want to try to negotiate all of them all at the same time, or should we have, break it up like we have for several years, meaning we do four and then three or whatever. So that's some decisions that we'll make down the road, but currently we have nine unions. In the HR functions box, that just kind of tells you a little bit about what we do and our, our office's duties, input and payroll data, personnel management, employee relations. I'm also, as you alluded to, the Assistant County Administrator duties, benefits, workers' comps, FMLA, labor negotiations, annual county and HR personnel budget process, which should be starting here and probably around April is when I start the budget process. I'm also on the safety, EAC, insurance, wellness, building, ARPA finance, risk management committees, staffing and advertising, and also employee evaluations. So Melissa Young, she does a lot of the employee evaluations tracking, and she also does a lot with the FMLA and workers' comp. Right below that box is our Clay County data. This, I updated as of January 30th. We've had, we had 642 employees with Clay County. That, of course, fluctuates almost daily with people coming and going, but as of that date, we had 472 full-time employees, 19 part-time, and 147 variable hour. And as you can see from this chart, and in the past, our variable hour, we rely a lot on variable hour employees, and those are employees that don't necessarily have a set schedule. We try to keep them to 19 hours per week, and that, I think, when I first got here, that number was about 90, and now it's up to about 147. I know juvenile detention uses a lot of variable hours. Corrections uses some, Public Health, Detox, they use a lot of variable hours as well.
I had a question on.
Sure.
You got, where they're from, home, Minnesota or North Dakota, the other four, were they homeless people or?
You know, those are people that are most likely students that have their home of record in another state. So it might be South Dakota, might be Wisconsin, that they're, maybe they're going to school.
Okay.
They use their home, home of record.
Thank you, excellent.
Sure. As you see the numbers, we have 255 men and 387 women working for the county. Last year, we hired, I think that should be 2023 hires, I apologize for that. We hired 181 employees and had 133 separations. The next block down is the age of the workforce, and if you look at that, a lot of our employees are between the ages of 16 and 35. So we still, we do have a very young, young workforce coming into the workforce, and I think on one of the employee data, 40, 40 point, and this is on the data sheet, 40.5% of our employees are aged 35 or younger, and 40.6% are aged 36 to 55. So we do have a younger workforce coming into the, to Clay County. Up on Clay County stats for 2023, we had 61 work comp cases recorded. We had 70 concern forms submitted, concerned citizens' forms submitted, and I'd like to take a moment just to say that, that, I think personally, that program is excellent. What happens is we have a button right on the front page of our website, it says Citizens Concerns. They hit that button, they fill out the form, and then that concern comes to both me and the department, if they know which department to send it to. And I would say within 24 hours, if not a couple hours, that citizen will get a response from the department head, a supervisor, or somebody like that. So they're getting really quick turnaround. I want to highlight Highway, they get a lot of them, you know, with ditches that are filled or roads that are need plowed or whatever, and they are very responsive in getting that done. So I encourage that, for citizens that need something helped or need something done, to use that button, because it goes straight to me and then I send it to the department if the, if the citizen doesn't know which department it needs to go to. So there's some follow-up on that.
A question, your work comp case is 61, that seems like a high number. Do we have, is that a permanent, are they permanently on?
Um, that's, actually, that's low for 2023. If you, if you turn back to your data, our work comp cases in 2020 were 64, 2021 was 93, 2022 is 80, and last year it was 61. That, that includes everybody, so if you get hurt, that doesn't mean like you hospitalized and had to go home or were on work comp forever. Those are work comp claims that, let's say somebody slips on the sidewalk, or some of it has to do with our sheriff's office and their corrections and our juvenile detention where we might have one of our employees beat up, those might go into work comp. So we, that's, that may seem high, but if you break it down, that's not, because we report everything to work comp, and then they determine if it's, you know, should be paid out or anything like that. I don't have the number, and I, and I can get that number, of how many actual work comp claims that we have had to pay out because somebody was injured and couldn't go to work. But most of these injuries are people that just come back, come back to work the same day. But because it was an accident or injury, we, we report that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, we processed 799 applications last year. We currently have 516 eligible employees, and then if you look down there, it gives you the, kind of the breakdown between our single, single grandfather plans, our single new plans, and that's anybody that was hired after 2020, January 1st, 2020, and then our family plans. So if you recall, way back when, we were trying to increase our family participation, and it looks like that is going up, and as, as employees retire or leave employment and we replace them, they go into the single new plan, so that's why you're seeing the, the single grandfather plans go down and the single new plans starting to go up. We currently have seven benefit eligible couples working in Clay County, and we're trying to work through that on, with the insurance committee on whether they, because right now they have, everybody has to have insurance. So if we have a couples, one of them has to, which would take single, and if they have kids, they would, the other one would take family. And so we're trying to work through that, is that, is that the most cost effective and way to do things? So that, that's coming in the future. And then the bottom chart just shows you our progression of how many employees we've had since 2017. So we have gone up quite a bit in those, in those years. On the next page, just gives you a few charts on the stats that we have. Like I said, a lot of our employees have only been here from day one to five years. So 261 people in the county have only been here less than five years. The hires by type, like I said, in 2023, a lot of our hires and most of our hires were variable hour. That's, that's a very, very status that turns over a lot. You know, some, a lot of them are students, they go and work here, especially in the juvenile detention center. They work here until they graduate, then they go on to other jobs, or they may even be hired on as full-time in the juvenile detention center. Same with corrections and detox. Citizens Concern Forum, that just shows you how many we've had in the past year since 2018, and then some ethnicity stats there as well. Some of the HR accomplishments for 2023. One of the biggest headaches I've had since October, or actually earlier, has been the Earn Safe and Sick time. That went into effect on January 1st, and we have been having major problems in trying to get that incorporated into our HR payroll system, UKG. I put in a case back in October 13th to try to make sure it was ready for January 1st. That, and we've been working on it since then. I have some good news, is as of yesterday, I had a meeting, another meeting with UKG, and I think we have it figured out, so we'll see during the next payroll. But that has been a real challenge to get that up and running. Also, last year, we had our first year where we did our benefits open enrollment online. Of course, there were some bumps in the road with any other new program that you put into place. People had to call a counselor and talk to a counselor and walk through their, their. People had to call a counselor and talk to a counselor and walk through their, their health benefits and, but I think this year, it should go smoother. We learned a few things last year. And also, this year, they'll be able to just go online and choose their benefits. They won't have to go through a counselor to get those. So we're hoping that this year will be a little bit better than last year on the open enrollment online. We'll be reviewing and pending the Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave. That goes into effect on Jan, January, well, in 2026. And that, there's still a lot of questions out on that as well. We went through the policy reviews for our new legalization of cannabis laws. We attended meetings for the new detox and DMV building projects. It's always seems like we're building something, so that always keeps us busy. We finished up a few negotiations in 2023, in, in January of 2023. We started supervisors' trainings, which I think have been really helpful. We've gotten pretty good turnout. I'm actually having another one this afternoon. We have them once a month, the third Tuesday of the month. No, is it the third Tuesday? What Tuesday are we on? Well, it's the Tuesday afternoon of the month. We have one per month. And I think that the supervisors are getting something out of that. And we cover a wide range of topics, from hiring to evaluations to, today, we're going to look at some scenarios that I'm going to give them, and they'll have to come up with how they would react to each of those scenarios. Anna still comes over to the courthouse every Wednesday, so the people over in this area can come up and see her if they have any HR questions. I've also been involved with the past, past couple months with the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Director candidate search. That has taken a little bit more time than I had anticipated. I'm also the recorder for the Minnesota C C C HR Payroll Group, and I was also involved with the Minnesota Public Safety Money Distribution Plan. The rest of this is just some, some data for you, showing you some trends throughout on the next page. Let me download this here. And you can look at that at, at your leisure. And then the last page is just a review of the referral program. This, I think, has been really successful. As you can see there, we have had 84 people recruited when we started this, and we've had 73 recruiters. We've had 30 full-time people recruited and 54 variable hour people recorded, recruited. And so far, total payout has been $15,250 as of today. I think this is really a good program, because right now, with all the, you know, counties and the, and the shortage of manpower and everything, Clay County is in a very good spot. You know, we, I think public health is probably our, our one department that we're really having to struggle with, public health nurses and detox. But, let's see, I think I had, oh, yeah. So in the Sheriff's Department, we just in-processed five corrections officers yesterday. I think that might bring them up to full strength. And if you remember, I think last year about this time, they were down 15, and we were shipping people out to other places. There's the, they have a one community service support officer that you guys approved, a C S O, a couple weeks ago. And so that advertisement is out there as well. And then we're still posting for one full-time deputy. So in that regards, you know, we're seeing a lot of people coming to Clay County, and a lot of our departments are really, are really filled up. I think the attorney, you're missing two attorneys, so that's a little bit more. And then, like I said, the detox and public health, they're probably are in the worst shape as far as getting people in and getting them hired. They're down three LPNs and one RN and one detox supervisor. And then for public health, they're down 4.6 F T Es for family health and two RNs for adult health. So we still have some work to, work to go with them as well. Other than that, that concludes my presentation. If anybody else has any questions, I'm certainly, hopefully, can answer them. Oh, some of the things that we will be, be watching in the coming years, of course, is the Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave Act. That's going to be a huge undertaking. We did talk about the 2024 market study that we're going to be having, so that will take up some of our time in 2024. We're possibly looking at an automated application process. And some of the 2026 insurance changes that we're looking at, not only possibly going self-insured, but the ability to waive coverage, couples' insurance and the county contribution, and even pet insurance. We've had a lot of inquiries on why wouldn't we, why can't we offer pet insurance? So those are some of, some of the things that we'll be talking about in the future regarding the insurance. And we have to kind of start now, because 2026 is going to come pretty darn fast, if you back, backdate everything.
Not that I don't want to tell you what to do, but I wouldn't spend too much time on pet insurance.
No. No, that's, that's.
I mean, I'm sure it's a concern for people, and it is.
That's a couple phone calls, and, just to see if it's, I mean, we wouldn't be paying for it. It would, we would be offering it like we offer vision or.
Okay.
Long terms.
That'd be full paid by the employee.
Yes, yes.
All right, then.
Just so that would come out of their paycheck.
All right.
And go into that. But that hasn't been discussed at the full insurance.
I don't think that should be something in the county.
No, we wouldn't, we would not pay part of that. That would be on their own.
Thank you. Now that you brought it out in the public meeting, I'm sure my wife's going to bring it to my attention.
It can get expensive. No doubt.
Paul.
So Darren, it does concern me about public health. And at what point, I'm just asking, does that really start affecting the work that they're trying to do? In other words, I mean, are we at a crisis point right now? And how do, how do we build our way out of this?
Well, as you know, public health nurses have always been difficult. I mean, even since I've been here, we've never had a plethora of public health nurses. It's always been one of those that are very difficult. It's because we, we compete with Sanford, Essentia, you know, there's big, big companies over there that are paying way more than what we can pay. I sat on an RN supervisor, detox RN supervisor interview the other day, and we didn't really talk money at that point, but she was going to get her P A physician's decision, so she would have already been out of the category of detox supervisor. I know that they have interviewed some other public health nurses recently, but they're looking at, you know, one of the ones said she, she wanted at least $45 an hour to come here, and that's not even on our, on our grid for that, for that grade. So I think that's going to be an ongoing issue, and unfortunately, the people that are here, that just adds to their caseload. So, you know, then they feel stressed and, and trying to get their, their job done. It's, this isn't, this isn't a this year or last year problem. This has been a problem for many, many years.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, you've got a lot of work in front of you, and you've done a lot of work. You and your, your team are doing exceptional, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now, as county administrator, current county administrator, you're up again.
Yes, I am.
Request for approval, change order number four for the withdrawal management detox, detoxification facility project.
Yep. This was a meeting that we had, our last construction meeting, and they came back with a few changes that they had to make. As you see on the back, one of them is with, I think, a couple of the doors on how they were swinging, swinging and the, the framing that they anticipated they needed. Once they looked at the, the drawings a little bit more, they determined that they had to have these doors swing a different way, and so that the hinges were on the wrong side. The, the door swing changes is what that was for. And I'm not a, a construction guy, so I'm probably explaining this horribly, but that, that was the change for the, the detox. And then, do you want me to go through both of them?
Uh, yes.
And then the second one is the access panels. As you know, they each have pods, and if you know where the urinals and toilets are, they, in the correctional facility, they have a hallway behind all that, so that if something is flushed down the toilet, that, that clogs it up, they can go back there and, and fix it. Well, with the detox, that's not necessarily the case, so they have to put in these access panels so that they can get in, so that they can clear out any clogs that are created by the, the people that are staying there. So that was something that was added on based on the, the description of the diagram. So as, as an update, we, the county put $400,000 as part of the contingency fund. So far, we've spent $138,421, which still remaining, leaves a remaining balance of 261,579 of our, of our contingency. And now that we're out of the ground and inside the, the facility, you know, they don't anticipate us using a lot of the contingency at this point.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All right, have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have committee reports. I'm going to start with Commissioner Krabnikoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple meetings last week. The first one was, most of it Darren already just covered. We had a small group insurance meeting, Commissioner Campbell and I, a couple people from HR, Lori Johnson, Treasurer, and, is that it?
Anna.
Yeah.
Lori.
Yeah. So anyway, if you will, on this back sheet that Darren just showed us, of things we'll be watching for in the coming years, he mentioned items there, and that's pretty much what we covered. And so again, these are just early discussions to try to stay ahead of when the benefit package will, as it develops. So again, insurance, health insurance in particular is at, you know, a high inflationary rate of, for coverages, and how do we get that in a way that it's, it's good for our employees without breaking the bank with the county. So it's a balance, balancing act that will develop. Last night, I was at the Buffalo Red Watershed District Board Meeting for the month of February, and just, it's that time of year where the, the permits, those type things are down right now, because it's, you know, it's kind of the off-season, if you will, for rural work. But we talked about small projects that were going on, mainly on the, in Woke County, on the Buffalo, South Branch of the Buffalo. They'll have upcoming, their annual audit coming up, they've worked with Brady Martz. And probably the big one, I think that was important to talk about, was they, from the Clean Water Fund, they got their allocation, which like the Wild Rice for the one Watershed One Plan, and they got $1.96 million. And this is the third round through that program, and that's about 100 grand more than they received last year. So, all good. That's what I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
I only have one meeting scheduled, and that was canceled to be on the Yellow Ribbon. They canceled that meeting last Thursday, and under that, I had no meetings.
All right, thanks. On the 8th, Thursday, I had the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. We spent some time just coming up, since we don't have a permanent director at this point, we had to come up with some, kind of a chain of command for the architect who's working on design for the new, new dispatch center. And we included the Cass County Administrator, the current Cass County Administrator, as a contact point for the architect, along with the interim director. And it, it's just kind of designed, we had some door placement, and we were about to get wall coloring questions, and I don't think the Board of Authority needed to do that, so we kind of worked things out to where staff and the, the executive committee will have, handle those things, and they can kick it on up the food chain if, if it's something that needs to go to the Board of Authority. Friday, I had a meeting with Kimberly Savinzo and County Administrator and some of the staff, just basically our annual recorders' meeting. Kimberly will be here in three weeks, sometime here upcoming, to present to us. I don't want to be a spoiler, but one of the, one of the issues she'll bring forward is the ability, when people get a marriage license, that we can actually, county, county personnel can administer the ceremony. And it'll be kind of interesting. It's, there's a lot of bugs to work out, and I won't, I won't go into Kimberly's presentation, but it is interesting, and it's something we can do for people if, if it is what they want. Apparently, the judges have a finite number of appointments, and sometimes people show up, and there's a, a long wait to get a civil ceremony. We'll see if we can expedite that. Later that day, had a discussion on the candidates for the dispatch center director. Had human resources personnel from Fargo, who were the ones who oversee this process. And we discussed additional candidates and, and a screening process that had been done. And as a result, we have two interviews we're going to do tomorrow remotely as part of the screening interviews. And from then, I hope we will arrive at a list of finalists that'll satisfy the North Dakota Century Code. This is a position that's being paid through North Dakota, so we're following the rules. And we're trying to be very precise in that. One more thing I just want to bring up, I've talked to the, the commissioners on and off on some of these issues. We were going to try and have a work session on the 5th of March, and it's come to my attention that that is the Morehead Day at the Capitol, and we will have one or two commissioners absent. We have Commissioner Mojo absent today because she is at the Capitol, representing some of the needs we've got for the county. We, we can't have it on the 5th. Tentatively, we might look at the 12th, but in the work session, I think one of the, or some of the issues that have come up that we might want to discuss is the use of the area that's currently occupied by the detox facility and family services. Look at costs of transitioning into other use, who's interested in those uses, and maybe even get to the point where we look at some of the long-range concerns we have with family service center as far as maintenance and making changes and keeping it a viable facility. The legislation we discussed today about the, the mental health facility is also something I think we may want to bring in staff and have a deeper dive into. I know it's early and we're in the planning phase, but this potentially is, is a very beneficial and useful project for a number of counties, not just Clay, not just Clay and Cass, but an extended region in, within the state. So, and the other is our position, I should know something within the week, our position on where we stand with the, the Economic Development Commission, and whether we are going to maintain a position on the Executive Board or not. So all those things are our potential topics of conversation. We'll look at trying to solidify March 12th or another date in our next meeting. And that concludes my report. Darren, do you have anything for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, last Tuesday, the 6th, I also attended the Insurance Committee meeting, which, um, has already been covered. Wednesday, uh, on the 7th, we had a managers' meeting. Um, we discussed some of the technology updates that are coming down. Um, we're gonna be transitioning to using a sign now for signatures on official documents. I believe Attorneys is already using it. Um, so maybe expanding that to other departments within Clay County. Um, Rory also talked about, uh, upcoming password changes, which I'm sure everybody's extremely excited about. They want, um, to, us to use 15 characters for our passwords. Um, so that's, that's coming down the pike, and it has to be like, you know, capitals, small letters, special characters, you know? Um, one of the suggestions Rory made was to make it like a phrase or something with, so that you can remember.
Can I vote against that, or?
You can't. I think everybody would vote against it, but, uh, seeing, uh, what happened a couple months ago, we probably want to look at that a little closer. Um, and then, um, these, Rory's also setting up a secure transfer file website, and what this does is if we have some large files, and HR does have a large, large files, um, other, I know Attorney's Office has large files, they're too big to send through email. And so what is set up where is where you can drag your file into this website, and I'm probably not technically explaining this right, but, um, and then notify the person that you're sending it to, and they get a link, and then they click that link, then they can get that file transferred to them. So it's, it, that's gonna be a, a big help for, uh, several of the departments that send big, large files. Um, we had a discussion on the upcoming market study and getting their PDQs in ASAP so we can, uh, have them all ready to go. A little bit about capital planning and upcoming space needs, which I think, uh, Commissioner Abigees was alluding to already. Um, in, uh, human resources, we talked about ESST reports. I did set up a report in UKG to, for people to track their ESST. And then, uh, this afternoon, like I mentioned, we have a supervisors' meeting, which should be, uh, hopefully well-attended. Um, also on Wednesday, we worked up, uh, some pay discrepancy questions that some, an employee had, and we also have, uh, two grievances going through the process right now. Um, and then I had a meeting with GIS to discuss the upcoming HR webpages that are gonna be changed, um, based on the new webpage design. On Thursday the 8th, um, I met with Justin to discuss a Title VI policy, and, uh, we're gonna be working on that together. And then, um, on Friday, uh, I had a meeting with Steve to discuss this week's tasks and what, what the things that I had to take over for him and meetings that I had to attend for him. And then I also, that afternoon, had a meeting with my own staff. And then, uh, on Monday, yesterday, I had a meeting with UKG. Hopefully, we get the ESST fixed for next payroll. So that's my, cross your fingers that that happens. If not, uh, I think I might jump out the window. So, um, that...
You gotta give us at least two months' notice if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, mine window's real ground, ground level, so I might get injured. It'll be a work comp claim, I'm sure. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, anything for us?
No, thanks, Chair.
Jackie?
I do, Mr. Chair.
All right.
So just a reminder that the county will be shut, uh, closed down on Monday, um, the 19th for, in observance of Presidents' Day, and then, um, the AMC Legislative Conference will be next week. And then I know Steve sent emails to you all about upcoming meetings, so just a reminder to let me know if you want to get signed up for those, and then for posting purposes for Quorum, just let me know. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Sarah Litterstan Lance, we can add nothing. All right, any additional, any other business? If not, we're adjourned.